Call the meeting of July 10, 2012 to order. Roll call.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Rosansky is currently not in attendance, and Councilmember Dago will not be attending today.
Clarification?
She has excused absence.
All right, of items on the consent calendar, Councilman Hinn.
None for me, thanks.
Councilman Selich?
I have none.
Councilman Hill?
I have none.
Mayor Protem Curry?
No lines.
And I have none. So we can move right into our first presentation. Chris, you're leading off with an introduction, or?
Hello, my name is Joel Geldon. I'm the chairman and chief executive officer of an organization called California Ships to Reefs. We are a nonprofit organization, and I'm also here with Gene Nelson, who is a member of our Public Relations Committee. I'd like to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to speak today. What I want to talk about is California Ships to Reefs' plan to create a network of artificial reefs off the coast of California. Currently, we are trying to find a way to, one, work with ships that are available and being sent to recycling, where they are an economic benefit, but only for that year, for that moment; two, use them in local reefs where they can be available for hundreds of years, as we could, ships are still being found that are ancient, that are still working; and enhance ocean life because they are habitats. I'm a diver. Newport Beach has many divers. The Southern California area has thousands of divers, and we know what diving, the ocean is by diving, and we know that that area of the ocean is not the same ocean that it was even 10 years ago, and certainly not the ocean that it was 50 years ago. We've all seen the environment change. Currently, there are a huge number of decommissioned naval vessels. Right now, very few of them have become available by a change that the government made in the last month that prevents many of them from becoming artificial reefs. But vessels are available from the Canadian Navy, from Mexico, from commercial purposes, and they are outdated, obsolete, and they provide an opportunity for habitat and for This industry of ship recycling generates about $2 billion a year, but by reefing, or it costs approximately $2 billion a year to the government. Reefing would be a quarter of that sum. Additionally, these 240 ships that are available only have two options. They have to be gotten rid of because they're, where they're sitting, they're rusting and polluting the ocean. And the opportunity we provide is to not just send them to become razor blades, but turn them into an opportunity to be additional marine environment and recreational tourist and fishing opportunities for a community. We have, through a vessel that we put down 11 years ago in San Diego, found that there is a tremendous amount of economic benefit that comes through this form of artificial reefing. What we do is, through the reefing, well, let me move on very quickly. There are all kinds of different reefs that are available, underwater art in other communities, and all kinds of different materials that are, can be used for reefing, not just ships, but barges, concrete rubble recycling, which is what the Songs Reef was. Additionally, we are working with the city of Dana Point. As they go through their reconstruction of their marina, we're going to be reefing their pier pilings rather than hauling them off to the recycling areas and the landfills, which is going to save them hundreds of thousands of dollars on the project. Scuba tourism is an exceptional benefit to the community. As I was about to tell you about the ship in San Diego, it cost $1.5 million to reef it. San Diego generates about $4.5 million in diving income from that a year in the community, the economy there. And that generates about $450,000 in tax revenue to the city of San Diego. San Diego only invested $50,000 in the project, and it was a highly beneficial result for them. Over the last 11 years, they've generated over $4 million in taxes from their $50,000 investment. Diving is something that is an activity that goes on 12 months of the year in California, whereas, as good a dive destination as any, and to see the impact that diving has in Laguna, excuse me, in Dana Point, where, which is the nearest marina to the Santa Nofree Reef, three fishing boats have converted over to becoming dive charters to be able to get the benefit out of that new Santa Nofree Reef as a dive attraction. In British Columbia, they generate $15 million a year in direct diving revenue in a small area in freezing cold water because of these attractions of these man-made artificial reefs. And Florida has a tremendous impact from diving and fishing. They actually have a state program that is devoted through their Department of Fish and Game to sinking vessels. Last week, they just sank another naval vessel, and they generate almost $2 billion a year to their economy from this process. We all know the kinds of interests, the kinds of industries that benefit, the kinds of businesses that benefit from tourism. And that benefit is going to not only work for the economy, but also for the benefit of the ecology. The generation of new habitat, putting new areas, these reefs physically down on the bottom of the ocean, makes an opportunity for both the biomass to grow, but also for the growing biomass to be protected. And the new artificial reefs, because of the structure that goes down, since they're man-made, can be used not only for economic purposes, but also through technology for educational purposes. And they would be the, oh, I guess you could say, the birthplace for not only young education, but many degrees could be made, PhDs could be made from research on these kinds of programs. To prepare these ships, or any kind of a structure for artificial reefing, they need to be cleaned, they need to be prepared for divers so they're not dangerous or hazardous. The reef needs to be towed out to the location, and finally, navigational tools need to be put on them, so they're marked for both vessels that travel by, and also for vessels that want to bring tourist divers to those locations. We are looking to do these projects with different sources of funding. There are federal funds available for military vessels. The federal government already has attached money through the Congress for every one of the US vessels that goes. Other nations, Canada amongst them, will not let a vessel go for artificial reefing and leave their country unless it's been cleaned. Some of the materials we're talking about reefing have never been used, such as building concrete rubble, and that generate, that's clean from the beginning, or pier pilings, which have already been in the water. And what we're doing is working with municipalities that are interested in this process. We've been, Dana Point began this process by passing a resolution just supporting the idea of artificial reefing. Once that passed that milestone, we were able to put together a team of local community members to lead a project to work with artificial reefing. And what we did was, we identified this vessel, the Kowishewi, which sadly enough, the Maritime Administration gave to us last year and withdrew from us two weeks ago because of issues in, changes in their rules. We have another vessel that we've asked them for in exchange for the Kowishewi. But to give you an idea of the kind of attraction this is, partially, it's because of its size. In the lower right of the picture of the vessel, you can see a fish, and that fish is actually a sperm whale. So it gives you an idea of the kind of size of this vessel when you compare it to the size of one of the largest mammals on the planet. This is a real opportunity for us to work with not just governmental agencies, but with the private economy, with non-governmental organizations that are interested in enhancing the environment, and also with educational institutions to be able to make an enhancement to our community that can also make an enhancement to our community's economy. What we would like to do is be as much of a resource as the council would request of us, for any information they might want to have, if projects of this kind might be of interest to them, especially if the council is interested in doing projects within Newport Bay itself, where there might be materials that might be an expense to them to move out of the bay, that we could otherwise convert into projects for artificial reefing that could potentially be used by the local community, especially the charter community, to generate revenue within the recreational and fishing charter businesses. And I'm prepared to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilman Hinn?
Yeah, can you explain briefly, why did the federal government change the rules, and what rules did they change?
Well, the federal government changed, let me start with the second part of the question first. The rules that they changed are the rules that govern the ships that are available for artificial reefing. And the change in the rule was that any vessel that was made with materials that were insulated with PCBs, polychlorinated bifenols, were to be stricken from the list. And the Maritime Administration's fleet is currently made up of vessels of that age that were made during that time. And so what they did was, as a result of lawsuits that had been made by environmental groups for having these polychlorinated bifenol vessels reefed on the East Coast, they said, "We think that discretion, in our case, is the better form of valor, and we're going to strike these vessels that might have these environmental concerns." Now, as new vessels move on to the list, those vessels have been built after that period, and those new vessels are going to be amenable to reefing under Meret's new rules.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for inviting me.
Is there public comment on this item?
Dan Persol, Corona Del Mar. It's the second time I've heard that presentation, and my concern about it is that there was no mention of any potential problems, any risks whatsoever. That was a complete positive sales job for this, and maybe it is absolutely wonderful, but I would be interested in hearing from either the city's ecologist or others about some pitfalls. Last time I asked about, will this be good for sea lions, because I was worried about, well, maybe it would create more sea lions in the harbor, which are somewhat of a nuisance to the city of Newport Beach and the boats. And he was like, "Oh, yeah, it'll be great for the sea lions, it'll be a lot more sea lions." Well, that may be great, but that could also be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I'll bring it back to council. Any other comments? Well, thank you very much. It sounds like some things of interest. All right. Request to amend the ordinance regarding the taxation of hotel rooms.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm going to ask Tracy and Dana to make a brief report. We think the staff report's fairly explanatory, and I would acknowledge that Gary Sherwin's in the audience, too, if folks have questions of Gary, or if Gary wants to say something. So with that, Dana?
Really, we're looking for a policy direction. The hotels in Visit Newport Beach have discussed over the last couple of months our policy, the way our ordinance currently reads, as it deals with complimentary rooms. And so I told Gary in Visit Newport Beach, we'd bring it back, put it before you. I think the staff report's pretty self-explanatory, it gives you some options to give us some direction, and we're just happy to take direction back from you.
All right, any, Councilman Selich?
Yeah, I was confused. Are we collecting that on comp rooms now, or are we not collecting it?
We are.
And what, how do you, how do you calculate that?
The way the auditors go out currently, the comp rooms is an additional test that she will do when they give her the room revenue sheets, and she has them confirm that any comp rooms they've given have been subject to the TOT tax. But what she doesn't have is a full listing every year of all the comp rooms given to the hotels. So that's why we weren't able to do the full analysis yet of what the potential fiscal impact could be. But one of the audits from last year, it was brought to light that one of the hotels was not collecting the tax, and she found this by doing her regular audit test. And so they appealed to the city, disagreeing with our interpretation of the code. That went to an independent hearing officer. They upheld the city's interpretation of their code, and, but that sparked the conversation between the hoteliers and VNB about, hey, we'd like to change the code.
I'm just a simple guy. I don't understand what you said.
Tracy, is it based on the rack rate, or how do they even calculate it? Like, one room is comped, it's based on rack rate?
Right, it's just whatever they would-
So it's the advertised rate, not a rate that someone might negotiate?
No, it's just whatever they would have normally charged for that rate.
Mayor Protem Curry?
Well, we have among the most efficient revenue-collecting bureaus of any city I'm aware of, and sometimes they're too efficient. And this is one of those cases. First of all, I stay in hotels a lot. I've spent three years in Marriott Hotels, I've never paid a rack rate. So it's a disadvantage to the hotels to charge them at that rate to begin with. Secondly, you know, we have a significant tourist business, and part of that business thrives on the fact that we're able to bring in meeting planners, that we're able to bring in people who turn around and sell our product. And it is simply not, in my view, consistent with being a business-friendly environment or a business-friendly city when we charge people a tax on a free room. Because I think most people look at that and they scratch their head about it. And while I appreciate the efficiency of our revenue collection operation, and I don't want to disparage them because they do a good job, they found this little item, I think this is one where we ought to give some policy direction that says that we're not going to charge this tax on a phantom income on a free room.
Councilman Hinn?
Yeah, I'm generally sympathetic to making a change here, although the category of free rooms to disgruntled guests and to employees does seem to be a little bit of a different kind of category than maybe what you were referencing, Keith, so I do have some reservations about those two categories. As to the other categories, though, I don't have a problem relying upon the judgment of the hoteliers to make a good decision in terms of promoting their hotel, and therefore the TOT tax for the city, because they take a much bigger hit than the city does by making that decision, by giving up the value of that room. So in terms of the first couple of items, and the first couple of reasons, I'm in favor of providing some relief here.
Councilman Hill?
I think it's meaningful to note in the comparisons that there are only two cities that were evaluated that do charge the tax, Beverly Hills and Orange. And Anaheim, Bellflower, Palm Springs, San Rafael, San Diego, Santa Barbara, Sunnyvale, Vacaville, all of those do not.
Well, I certainly am impressed that Vacaville doesn't.
Well, last time I stayed there in 18...
Yeah.
But I guess the point being is, I agree with Councilman Curry, that I think it's important to be business-friendly, I think it's important to market the city well, I think we do that, and I think it's kind of an insult to the people that we call upon constantly to give comp rooms, to then turn around and tell them, by the way, you've got to foot the tax on it as well.
Nancy, I had another-
Councilman Hinn?
You know, I do see this listing here of all the other cities that do not charge TOT. Is that flatly true for all categories of comp rooms? In other words, there's a no here, does that mean they don't charge for comp rooms of any kind?
Actually, the question that was posed to the hotels was really just for comp rooms as defined, where there was no economic benefit to the hotel. So it was, it wasn't, we didn't give the same four criteria when we were doing the survey, so I'm not really sure. And then Sunnyvale said that they do all comp rooms, but they cap it at 1%. So that would be another question, if the council still desires us to review caps or anything like that.
So I guess I'd like to hear from Gary Sherwin if he'd care to comment on this conversation, whenever we're done with council comments here.
Looks like we're done.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to speak on this subject. Let me be really clear, first and foremost, that our hotels do not enjoy or seek out giving away complimentary rooms. It's not a particularly good business practice, by and large, but they do it really for two essential reasons. The first reason is for charitable reasons, and we know that there are a lot of charitable organizations here in town, whether it's been the, you know, the Chamber of Commerce, or some of the other Susan G. Komen, or some of the other worthy nonprofits that use these rooms either to auction off and to generate some revenue for their own respective organizations, which is also very good. In some cases, we've had comp rooms given because we had a situation in town. In fact, it was not that long ago, it was less than two weeks ago. You probably recall the situation where the grandfather was swimming with his grandson off the peninsula, and fortunately, the grandfather got caught in a riptide, passed away, and the grandchildren and the grandmother had to stay here in town for several days because they were dealing with the coroner's office and autopsies and such. And out of that, the Radisson Hotel stepped up and comped that family's stay because we wanted to do the right thing, because they had undergone a very traumatic incident, and we at least wanted to show some caring and compassion from the city's standpoint. In fact, I had a conversation with the police department earlier today. We're having another situation that's somewhat similar to that. There's no death involved, but it's certainly involving a family in distress that we're trying to do some assistance for. So I don't think we want to try to penalize the hotels when they're trying to do something good for the city and for some worthy nonprofits. And then as far as our business is concerned, we do bring in a lot of meeting planners. There is a case where we're going to be bringing in 75 meeting planners. The Marriott is going to comp 75 of those rooms because these represent 75 key clients that will be bringing business to Newport Beach. And it may not all be to the Marriott, it may go to some of the other hotels. Marriott is fully aware of that, but they understand that there's a greater good here at play. And every city that we compete against are bringing many of these same meeting planners and comping their room. It's sort of a standard way of doing business, and that's how you expose them to the destination and the product and the experience, and ultimately get them to say yes. It's one of our most important sales tools in trying to do that. Our hotels want to be good citizens. I think as you, as you've dealt with them, you know that they want to do the right thing, they want to do the honorable thing, but this seems to go a bit too far in trying to penalize sometimes some good deeds that they're trying to do to help the community at large. If you have any questions about it, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, Gary, do you have any comment about the distinguishment that I tried to raise on these other two categories, where you've got disgruntled guests and rooms to hotel-
on these other two categories, where you've got disgruntled guests and rooms to hotel employees?
Well, there are time, I, I will tell you, the vast majority of the rooms that are given out are either for charitable endeavors, and, and very often what happens when the Marriott here goes and asks the Marriott, say, in another city for a free room to give away at a charitable function here, they then have to reciprocate and give a room to that hotel in order to compensate them for that. Sort of a, you know, the way it tends to work, and, and very often, that's what, that's what occurs. The disgruntled guests is a very, very, very small portion of, of the situation. Most hotels will work to try to accommodate them in other ways. If the trip has been an utter disaster, the hotel is really screwed up in some way, they may try to offer them a free room as compensation. But that is probably less than one, one-tenth of 1% of the total comp rooms that are given away in this community.
Any other questions, Gary? All right, I'll bring it back.
Thank you.
Any further comments from council? Councilman Selig?
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Curry. I just don't see the, the sense or the reason to be charging for hotel room revenue that they don't receive, so I'm pretty much in favor exempting all four categories.
All right, I think you've gotten your direction, then?
So, I think we-
What was a little more public? I'm sorry, I thought of Gary as public comment. Go ahead, Jim.
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. It seems to me that Revenue Manager Seng made a compelling argument in the staff report for why the transient occupancy tax is needed by the city to defray the cost to providing city services to hotel room occupants, whether those occupants are paying rent for the room in money or not. Since the levy to the city is divided in our municipal code into two parts, one chapter in the municipal code calling for the 9% charge that we call transient occupancy tax, and a separate chapter levying the 1% charge that is described as a service fee, which is used for promotion, rather than for paying for city services. My suggestion in my written comments was that you might want, if you're wanting to waive anything, you might want to consider just changing that one chapter about the 1% and waiving that promotional fee. Beyond that, I wanted to make a couple of comments. Regarding this survey, I noticed that there are no responses from our neighboring coastal cities that provide hotel services, namely Huntington Beach and Laguna Beach, so I don't know that we're really knowing what is happening in other localities. And like Councilman Selig, I have to wonder how conscientious lodging owners are at present about reporting to the city all the rooms that happen to be occupied, but for which no monetary payment has been received. In addition, as Mayor Protem Curry and Mr. Sherwin both mentioned, the report places considerable emphasis on the comping of rooms for people that are in the hospitality industry. And I wanted to note that in Visit Newport Beach's budget for the coming year, which you and the public are going to be seeing on the consent calendar tonight, pretty much for the first time, it reports that Visit Newport Beach is expecting to spend itself $13,400 on domestic accommodations for its own employees during the coming year, and another $5,000 for rooms overseas. And that makes me wonder if our own travel ambassadors, who I assume are operating on expense accounts, are correctly reporting back to their superiors when their rooms are comped, and if their rooms are not being comped, why they're not? And if they're not, it would seem to me that in the industry elsewhere, they're apparently not extending to us the same courtesy that we do to their ambassadors coming here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. My name is George Schroeder. You know, I, I'm not sure if I support this or oppose it, but one thing I am sure about is that you need a better report from the staff. I'm sure the staff is very busy, you know, perhaps are overworked, but to get this staff report and to be able to draw a conclusion, you know, I, I think you just need more information. The fact that Vacaville, Sunnyvale, Bellflower doesn't charge TOT taxes on comp rooms, you know, I just don't see how that relates to what we do here. I think what should have been on the report is what does Huntington Beach do? Okay, that's where, who we're competing with. What does Irvine do? What does Costa Mesa do? You know, I can't believe we could not get that information. You know, I think that's the information we, we need to have. Most of the large hotels have hotels in those cities. I'm sure they know what's going on. So again, it may be a good idea, but I just think that this report, to go up to like, you know, San Rafael and say, well, they don't. I mean, I can't believe somebody's going to say, you know, a charitable hotel room that's been comped. I mean, they have overhead, they have expenses. If they're told, we can comp the room, but we have to charge you 18 bucks for the 200 taller room, you know, I don't think they're going to not stay here. Okay? I mean, I don't think they've got free airfare here. So again, there may be a case to be made for this, but I don't think this report gives you enough information to come to that conclusion. We should look at what Irvine, Huntington Beach, and Costa Mesa does. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment?
To address that last point, I, we do know what our neighboring cities do charge, and they don't charge. We checked with Huntington Beach and Costa Mesa and Laguna. They do not, in fact, none of our neighboring cities do charge any, any room tax on comp rooms.
Thank you. How do we validate this?
This, this survey was done and-
No, no, I don't mean the survey.
Oh.
I mean, how do we validate the fact that the rooms are comped? I mean, if I were a manager and I wasn't happy with my bottom line, all of a sudden I'd have whole bunch of comp rooms, because I wouldn't want to pay the tax on them.
We would, if it was this council's desire, we didn't have the time to do that type of analysis, we would have to go back and work with the hotels to get records that would be able to give us a true estimate of what an annual cost would be of the comped hotels.
And how much is that going to cost?
Well, it's just time. It would just be time.
Well, time is money.
Yeah. We'd probably be able to do it over the next month, if the hotels could provide the information that we would need by then.
And we would not have to do that every year?
It would just give you a, a true estimate of what the cost would be, or the potential revenue loss to the city. So that's what we had is item number four, is go out and do the full analysis, which we didn't have the time to do before this meeting today.
All right.
I think the question that she asked is how, you know, how do we track this going forward? I mean, I agree, yeah, you can give us an estimate, but she's saying, how do we protect against hoteliers that will falsify their records to say these were comped?
During the audit process, that would be something that was checked. And again, it, it, they could falsify anything they want, so they're, they're on their honor, but right now, as it is on their honor as well, going forward with each audit, we would ask for that information, and then we would do what we could to check that it was valid. But if they're not collecting money, there's really a hard way to do that in an audit process, when you have no check registers or bank reconciliations or anything independent that you could check with.
All right.
Don't they have to like, present your auditor, like, I don't know what is in the hotel business and rental business, a rent roll?
Yes.
So you can see, you know, what rooms were occupied, what nights and what the charges were?
Right, and then when she does her test-
And if you see any discrepancy in the pattern, then you can go further and ask for more detailed backup from their records?
Right. But again, these, if they're not collecting money on, you know, we're, we're trusting that they're putting it in that register at, at an amount, and then verifying that. If they don't put it in the register and they don't tell us about it, that's something we wouldn't know about. But that's something we wouldn't know about right now either.
Although I have no doubt that each of these hotels maintain sophisticated systems that capture this information. I mean, I, it's, I don't worry too much about that issue, the tracking issue.
But we would continue to look at that through the audit process, to make sure there was no unusual jump, or that there wasn't a significant, if our TOT significantly declines for a particular hotel, we have years of experience to compare that to. So that's something we would follow up on, to see why the anomaly, why, why all of a sudden are your comp rooms more than your other rooms? And then I would just put the question back to council, do you want us to look into a potential cap? Like, if it goes over a certain amount, we cut it off, or, or do you just want us to look through our audit process and report back to the hotel if, if we see any anomalies?
Mayor Protem Curry?
No. You know, the issue here is let's administer this in the most effective and efficient way possible, and not play gotcha games. I mean, if we're going to exempt them, we're going to exempt them. Let's charge the tax that's due on rooms that people are paying for, and let's move forward from that.
All right, so am I to gather from the council that number two is the option they want? They don't want any further information?
Yes.
Number four, the charter update?
So we have a number of folks who will participate in this next presentation of the work of the Charter Update Committee, I think. I do see Chairman Paul Watkins here, and then Michael Torres and Rob Houston will go through the presentation with you. And just to note, council members, Mayor Gardner and Councilmember Rozansky were at almost all of the meetings. One or the other of them were at all of the meetings, so that they'll have a perspective on things, too. That, Rob?
Thanks, Dave. Good afternoon, mayor and council members. Before you have the 2012 Charter Update Committee Report, this is, of course, a committee that you established on May the 8th. Seven members were appointed on May the 22nd, and a fast yet thorough review occurred between then and now, with a total of six meetings happening with, as Dave mentioned, council members, some of them attending. We had citizens attending, we had good discussions, and the results are encompassed in this report. The committee chairman will be presenting a summary of this report and the recommendations made in it shortly, and I'll introduce him in a second. But first of all, I just want to confirm the timelines for this process, we can keep everything moving forward. To meet the requirements of the November 6 election, we need to have some, obviously clear direction from council as to which of these charter sections will be placed on ballot measure or measures very quickly. Essentially, in order to make that, we need that by the end of this evening's session, so that it can be brought forth for the call for election that'll be coming at the July 24th meeting, the very next meeting. So it's a sort of a quick turnaround. What we're proposing is to have a summary from the chair at the study session meeting here, have the report, and hopefully have council provide some direction if there's a group of sections that there's consensus to either accept or reject. And then if there's any identification that can be given as to certain sections that require further discussion, they could be highlighted and brought forth for the evening session to have for the, some focus conversation on then. So that's the proposal. I'll leave it with that, and without further ado, I'll introduce Paul Watkins, the chair for the Charter Update Committee.
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, thank you for allowing me the honor of serving as Charter Update Committee Chair. We had a, a busy six-week turn. We had one organizational meeting, and we had five substantive meetings. I'm pleased to report that everyone but Suzanne is with us tonight. David, and Dan, and Joe, and Jeff, and Paul Glawinkie are in the audience. They were very helpful, impressive, prepared, and added a great deal of value to our committee. I can't leave out thanking staff, particularly Dave and Aaron, and Michael, Tara and Tracy, Rob, and I'm sure there are others, who helped us immeasurably with a, a great many handouts, including handouts such as the Arden case, the class action memo that's posted on the city website, that concerns Section 1114 on claims and demands. We had a number of written comments, and as I look around the audience, I see many of those folks that contributed the comments are here this evening. Mr. Mosher and Bob Hawkins isn't here, I'm sure it will be later, Mr. and Mrs. Hendrickson and George Schroeder. We also had other resource documents prepared by staff, included Dan M. with his independent audit financial statement, Section 1116. We were in receipt of the Brown Act summary, handbook for committee members, a number of white papers from the commission's work two years ago, the conflict policy A16, a comparative statistical presentation that Dave gave us on June 21, and a, a compromise approach to the two camps on Section 708, the Board of Library Trustees, that Dan Wampel and, and Dave Kiff worked on. So from a standpoint of resource documents, we're so grateful to the council and the staff for presenting that information. Our results after six meetings, again, five of them substantive were that we had 31 of the charter sections recommended to be amended, seven recommended to be repealed, and five were recommended to be unchanged. The focus that we had, and I think it's reported, it's in the report that we prepared, we had Section 708 seemed to be a bit of a controversial section. It's entitled Board of Library Trustees: Powers and Duties, and we had two camps that were explored, really, that came to light on, or meeting on June 21. And the two camps are, let's leave it alone, let's let the Board of Trustees for the library appoint the library services director, keep that an unchanged part of our charter. The other camp seemed to recognize that as a city manager, city council, municipal form of government, that the buck stops with Dave, and that he ought to have the opportunity to terminate and to hire the library services director. What happened on the 21st is that we took a lot of testimony. We had a lot of testimony from the public. We had a lot of discussion at the committee level. And the, the outcome of that was that between the 21st, when we first began to discuss it, and the 28th of June, Dan and Dave got together and suggested a compromise of the two camps. Nothing new, nothing significant, just a compromise of the two camps, that would involve going to two members of the Board of Trustees and asking for their input before Dave would, would ultimately make the decision on appointing the library services director. So that's, that's kind of the main, the, the main or controversial part. I think there's a handout, Michael, I got just before I left my office, that has some blue color on it. I, I don't have that with me at, at present. But as I say, 708 seems to be the, the lightning rod of our committee. The balance of, of the sections were less controversial. Certainly, we did bring compensation current for the council. That was our feeling, the ministerial act, to look at cost of living and incorporate some additional cost of living index and geographical region. But by and large, the, the 43 items that we considered were not, were not nearly as controversial as 708. So we want to thank you for allowing us to serve. We'll have a, a bit more detailed presentation a bit later this evening, but I'm prepared to answer questions if you have any.
Councilman Hen?
Yeah, in terms of the process, Paul, would you comment on the extent to which you felt like the process was unfettered with undue influence? I mean, did you have a, did you have a genuine opportunity for give and take on all of these items? Did you feel in any way kind of hemmed in with the discussion?
Well, we, we worked at a, at a pace. Those that have observed the chair running other organizations know that we do proceed efficiently. But the public had input in four different instances, and in one of those instances, they had multiple input. So on agenda items, non-agenda items, the minutes, each member of the public could and frankly did comment. When it came to the substantive work of the committee, the charter sections themselves, either in a, a batch or individually, the members of the public could comment up to three minutes. So yes, we, we tried to honor that in our, in our deliberations. We had probably anywhere from, in some cases, as, as little as a minute to look at a charter section. And in the case of Section 1116, I think we spent well over an hour and brought it back again. It was the section that would never die, this was the independent audit and financial statement. So to answer your question, Mike, we, you know, our, our feeling was that we gave everybody a, a fair up- a fair opportunity to comment, and much of the comment was very valuable, particularly from, you know, Jim and the Hendricksons, and George had some very good comments, others, Dan Purcell, I should mention as well, had good comments, and Mr. Hawkins, Bob Hawkins had good comments. So I thought we considered that soberly and appropriately for the constitution of our city.
Okay. There were a couple of agenda items.
I just wanted to add something to your question, both where you said. I was there for almost all the meetings, and the meetings were, the discussions were lively. I don't think that the group was, you know, homogeneous by any means. There were different sides taken on issues. They deliberated. When they had a need for more information, they asked staff for that. They didn't just accept what was written there. A lot of these things were wordsmithed in different ways and forms than what staff had presented initially, so I don't think, I mean, the impression that I had was that they were not hemmed in at all, and they felt fairly free to explore all different types of alternatives and options within the confines of the list that we gave them.
Would you agree with that summary, Paul?
I would agree with that.
Okay, a couple other follow-up questions. There were a couple items having to do with council compensation. I just want to verify, my understanding was that the council members recused themselves during those deliberations?
That's accurate. I don't think that either Mayor Gardner or Steve participated in those.
Okay, and in particular for those items, did you feel any sense, any holding back or any sense of problem, I guess, in terms of the discussion?
No, and I...
This isn't just a matter of discussing what was on a recommendation. I mean, you had the opportunity to have a free-ranging discussion on all of these subjects, I assume.
Yeah, and again, in that regard, we asked Dave to provide comparative information on other councils, which he did. He's accumulating other data as we speak, and I guess we'll have something to share with the public, but certainly the audio tape indicated a number of jurisdictions where he offered comparative information. The bottom line on that particular section, Mike, is that, you know, what we were doing is just bringing something old up to date. We weren't, in my view, and I know there are some in the audience that may differ with us, but in our view, the committee's view, we were simply updating ministerially the compensation information, bringing it current for the CPI.
All right, may I just follow up one more? Okay, so there were five sections that were unchanged, apparently where the committee concluded not to act in spite of a staff recommendation.
That's accurate.
And if you wouldn't mind just taking a minute or two, I'd like to get some flavor of that, where you declined to act. And so two of those had to do with Section 603 and Section 605 on the duties and powers of the city clerk and the director of finance. Can you comment on, just give me a flavor of, you know, the reasons that you decided to decline to act on those sections, if you can recollect well enough now. We can cover that later this evening if you'd rather wait.
I mean, the two sections again, Mike?
603, which is the city clerk, powers and duties, and then Section 605, the director of finance, powers and duties.
Maybe I can respond to that, Councilmember Hen. In that situation, staff was recommending the insertion of the word "may" in response to the duties of the finance director, and the committee actually had a very spirited discussion about that and what the implication of the word "may" would be, and then ultimately decided they didn't want to do that because they thought it might be too permissive, and so they decided to take that word out and just keep it as a shall.
So that was finance. What about city clerk?
I believe that was the exact same situation.
Yes, Michael reminds me, the idea was that we didn't want to give those particular officers the option. We wanted to retain the mandatory nature of their services.
Okay, so less discretion was concluded by the committee. And then Section 611 on official bonds?
Well, again, we went back and forth on bonds. My memory of our discussion in that respect was that we determined that the bonds are provided to city employees, that the cost of the bonds, which we thought would be prohibitive, we found on, with staff's help in investigating the cost, is relatively affordable. I'm going to say something in the area of $5,500, does that sound about right? And it covers an array of employees. So the thought was not to change that arrangement and as an added protection to the city, have the bonding protection in play.
Again, opting for the more conservative position, I guess, for the choices you were presented, would that be a fair way to say it?
We felt that this might be an obsolete provision, and it was found after discussion, after inquiry of the cost, that it made sense to continue on with the bond, so that the efficiencies that would have been realized by removing the bond requirement were outweighed by, frankly, the small cost of the bond premium.
Okay, and then lastly, Section 1106 on centralized purchasing, that stayed unchanged?
Well, let me ask David to comment on that. I mean, it was thought to be a good thing, I guess, at the outset, that we would eliminate centralized purchasing on the theory that it would be more, you know, the practice in the city may be more diverse. But Dave, I think, checked with Dan and perhaps Tracy and others and found that that was not the case.
That's right. They felt that the current language is not a hindrance at all to effectiveness or efficiency, and that should stay that way.
Okay.
Mayor Potem Curry.
You didn't ask, actually, about Section 801?
Okay, sorry.
Did you have comments about it, or?
Well, I'm sorry, I meant to, actually. Thanks. So that's positions, Section 801 is positions included in the civil service system, so...
Yeah, again, I'll ask David for his input, but the language, I think, contemplated the ability of the council to opt in or opt out future employees into the system or out. And that, whether that was a controversial provision, it certainly generated some interest by Debbie Allen and some others on the board, and I think the choice was, after the committee looked at the issue, that it was better to leave unchanged. Is that right, David?
That's how I would say it, too, yes.
All right, Mayor Potem Curry.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Paul, and members of the committee for your service on this. I know this was a busy time of the year and a busy month that you had to do this, and I think you all did a splendid job. The committee represents the entire community, from the peninsula to Newport Coast. It's a very distinguished group of citizens with diverse points of views, and I know all of you strived very hard to produce this work, and I think it was an excellent product. I think many of you have had the experience of dealing with some of our frequent commentators, and I have a greater appreciation for what it's like being on the city council, and have expressed that you're never going to run for it, but that fact notwithstanding, I just want to follow up briefly, Paul, on one comment. You said you wanted to bring a compensation current, and by current, what you meant by that, I think, is a description in the charter so people can look at the charter and see what compensation is, that it's not being changed from its current level up or down. That's the intent of the committee?
That's accurate.
So we're all clear on that. What we're doing here is not changing to increase compensation for council members at all. We're simply making it so that you don't have to go back 30 years and calculate a CPI number to figure out what the real number is, and so we're making it more transparent.
It was a ministerial change, in our view, yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Rosansky?
Well, I didn't have any comments on the work, other than, and I'll reserve most of my comments tonight about the committee, but I do want to thank you, Paul, so does all the other committee members, to the extent that you're not here tonight, when I'll have more extensive comments, for your hard work that was associated with the committee. It was done quickly and efficiently and on time.
Thank you, Paul. Any other, what I'd like to do, I think, would be, work well, is to have, go right into public comment, and let everybody that wants to comment bring up their issues before we get into the checking off of things. And that way, so, but if there are issues that you would particularly like to see addressed by the public to mention now, otherwise, we'll just go to public comment, and you will have this one opportunity, as a member of the public, to speak on the issues that you would see, and then you'll have another opportunity this evening as well. So we're not going to go each issue by issue and have public comment on each frame. So, public comment is now open on this issue, and I wonder what this woman is going to talk about.
My name is Elizabeth Starr, and I just want to address the 708 about the library trustees. I've been with the library since 1989, and some of the librarians that we have had, it's not been a wonderful situation. They've not worked well with the trustees, they've not done wonderful things. For the past number of years, the system has been that the city manager is the one who actually hires a librarian, but when you hire a librarian, it takes a lot of people to kind of vet this person in order to get the best, very person. And I know that when one was hired, the city manager said, "I wish I could have done better." Well, that might have been one situation where the library trustees could have held out and said, "Let's do better before we put somebody into this place. Let's wait and have the vacancy until we get the right person." I never want to see the power taken away from the library trustees as far as running the library, because it should not be a political position. It should never be a situation where somebody who gets voted upon has to say, "No, we're not going to have Huckleberry Finn on the shelf because my constituent says no." That should never be. The city fathers knew what they were doing, but they set this board aside and had it be an independent group of people thinking through these problems and administering the library. But I admire the committee for all the work they've done on this, these charter recommendations. I realize it's been an enormous amount of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's an honor to follow Elizabeth Starr. For those of you who don't know, I think we spent about $25 million building the main branch library, and Elizabeth Starr and her group raised multiple millions from the residents and the public, so there was quite a bit of public contributions to that main branch library that we have. And I just want to follow on her comments, okay? Well, I'm sure this is information, you know, we had a survey done in 2007, Citizens Satisfactory Survey. At the very top of the list was the library. It was at 93%. Then in 2010, we did a survey again. Some of you actually ran, based on the results of the survey, how well that we were doing. The library went from 93% to 96% satisfaction. They also asked what services should get the most emphasis. At the very bottom was the library. The residents are extremely happy with the library system and the Board of Trustees, the way it's run now. The current language leaves the Board of Trustees as an autonomous group to run the library. The new language, fast-putted, you know, says that, puts them from being the board that runs the library to being advisors to the city council, library services director, and the city manager. So it's shifting the power to politicians, okay? And then also, it shifts the power to hire and fire the library services director with the city manager who serves at the pleasure of the city council. In November 1994, I'm sure most of you remember that election, we have the Gingrich revolution. Conservatives did very well. We had a charter amendment then, which simply asked, "Do you want to change the duties of the library Board of Trustees?" We had a conservative mayor then who wanted to bring the library under control of the city council. The residents did vote no in 1994. Lastly, some of you may recall the difficulty we had just placing a statue of a dead president in a public park, okay? That should not have been a controversial item, but it wasn't. We had this room full of both sides, okay? I don't think we should have a distinguished speaker, perhaps an ex-president, come to the library, then have the phones ring off the hook. I can't believe the library is allowing that ex-president to be a public speaker, okay? So I'm going to ask you, at the June 21 meeting, city manager Dave Kiff said, "I would recommend we make no changes to the library, Section 708." Okay, when I came back on the 28th, I called somebody the Tuesday before to discuss this, and I wasn't given a heads up. When I got to the meeting on the 28th, I did not have an opportunity to speak about this. I was told, "Well, you spoke on it last week." Well, the chairman said there wasn't any significant changes. There were a lot of changes, okay? So I think the chairman did as best of a job as he could with the short amount of time, but there was, and 80% or more of these changes are good, like the change of language from "he" to "he or she," or the change, you know, the proper words is a good thing. But I'm just going to say, on Section 708, I would suggest you do what city manager Dave Kiff said at the June 21 meeting, make no changes, or, and what Elizabeth Starr said, do not take an autonomous Board of Trustees and a library that has 96% approval rating from the residents and put it under the control of politicians. And we all like our city manager now, and the chair even said, "Do we want Dave to hire or fire the library director?" Well, that's not what the Charter Update says. If it was Dave Kiff, I probably wouldn't have a problem, because I have the highest degree of confidence in him. But city managers come and go. So anyways, I just want to pass out, here's the existing language, here's the proposed language. It's very difficult to read the strikeout, I'm sorry. Okay, so please read Item A, and then Item D or E, because, and if somehow this does make it on the ballot, I would ask that it be a standalone as it was in November of 1994.
All right. Thank you, George.
Madam Mayor, City Council Members, Paul Glawinkie, Corinna Del Mar. You may couch my comments, because I was a committee member, but I'm also a public, so I'm part of the public comment. City Councilmember Hen, you had a question about whether the committee had unfettered, unrestricted, not hemmed-in responsibilities and abilities, and 708 is a perfect example of that being true. We were completely not hemmed in, and to Mr. Schroeder's comment, at one point, city manager said, "I'm recommending no change." Committee came back and said, "No, this one has to change." So 708 is a lightning rod example, and it might make sense for the council to segregate it from other changes, if it's going to go to ballot. But I remind all of council, especially on 708, this is the organization chart of city, council, and city manager government. So city manager currently has the ability to hire and fire police chief, fire chief, municipal operations director, finance chief, and serves at the pleasure of the council. So since library services is a fundamentally basic part of the operation of Newport Beach, it's my personal belief, as a public, that library services director should also fit into that same organizational chart, which is why I strongly agree with the language change on 708.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I don't mean any personal insult to any of the people involved, all of whom I respect, but in my opinion, what you have before you this afternoon is the... But in my opinion, what you have before you this afternoon is the deeply flawed result of an even more deeply flawed process. I don't think anybody has yet owned up to who it was that produced the massive redlining that's before you. But it was just eight weeks ago that the idea was sprung on you that there was some urgent need to rewrite the city charter. I don't see anything in the product that's resulted that is urgent, yet this was so urgent. A need, as you may recall, that you had to ignore the directives found in the city charter as to how you are to create an advisory board to yourselves. It was so urgent that you had to ignore the state law as to how long openings have to be advertised before appointments can be made. And you even had to ignore your own directive that at least 14 nominees would be presented to the council unless 14, less than 14 applications were received, and that a member would be appointed from each council district unless there was not nominee from one of those districts. Then it was so rushed that there was not even time to swear in the members of this committee, as is required by the California Constitution. So, this is like a verdict from an unsworn jury that you have before you. And it was too hurried even for them to public review you the report that is being submitted to you tonight. Their charge, as you've heard and you know, was with no previous knowledge of the charter or of charter law to review 43 sections, which they did in six 90-minute meetings, which gave each of them less than two minutes to express their views on each of the sections, and much less than a minute if the staff and public were given equal time. And despite what Chair Watkins said, staff actually accommodated this problem by giving the public and the committee absolutely no written background on the issues or the reasons for the redlining, which could be studied in advance of any of the meetings. And in response to the questions that were raised, there was little or no written documentation provided to clutter the discussion. As a result, the substance of a matter was challenged, unless the substance of a matter was challenged by the public, the committee confined themselves primarily to studying the grammar of the changes being proposed, and even at that, they didn't do a particularly good job. I don't know what you have before you to look at. This is the report for the study session that I picked up in the lobby outside. This has been so uncarefully looked at that the, all the even-number pages are missing from this report, which is in the lobby. And to make up for that, we have stuck onto the back of it a budget amendment having to do with Measure M funds for Bristol Street relinquishment. This is the same thing I picked up on Friday. It's the same thing being passed out to the public today. Apparently, nobody ever bothered to look at it. One of the many ironies of this process, although I don't believe it myself, the committee was repeatedly told by the city attorney and the assistant city attorney that none of what is before you tonight is actually a substantive change at all, with the possible exception of 708, but rather just clarification of what the charter already says and what we, and that we are already in total compliance with the charter as written. And this is not a change from that at all, which at least in my mind, makes it doubly unnecessary to rush this mishmash of casually reviewed language, which is no more carefully reviewed than this report that you have before you, to the ballot in November. I have the same problem here that I had before the committee. I don't know any way to coherently advise you on my view of 43 different issues in the limited time I have before you. Maybe I'll try to highlight a couple of them tonight. In response to Councilman Hen's questions to the chair, I really had trouble recognizing the committee I attended from the responses you heard. I don't recall on June 21st that there was any in-depth discussion of the library trustees thing, because as you heard, the city manager said, "I'm withdrawing the suggestion. I have no problem with it." And I thought the discussion of that pretty much died at that point. And as you heard, it came back the next meeting. The people who are in the public thought the only thing that came back was a single little clause in this about the hiring and firing of the library trustee. Quite startled to find all of Mr. Kiff's or whoever redlined the charter, all of those recommendations coming back to you this afternoon. And as to the council compensation issue, as the chair said, he regarded it as purely ministerial, just making sure the numbers are right, totally ignoring the issue of whether any voter had ever intended to have you, the city council, be receiving medical vision, so forth, benefits, or membership and calpers.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Mayor Gardner, members of the council, I would like to respond to.
All right, why don't you, Paul, can we wait till we have all public comments?
Well, it's fresh in your mind.
Dan Purcell, Corona Del Mar. I wasn't particularly pleased with the process, and I realize this is going to the voters. And in the end, the residents of Newport Beach will have an opportunity to vote on each of these issues. But I thought the process was purposely restrictive of public input. And while committee members and council can praise each other for the quick work they did, the fact of the matter is, 43 items were covered in rapid succession. We were required to comment in batches. Any of these items could have taken many hours of discussion. There wasn't adequate reporting available. The first meeting started with the chairman on speakerphone from a Puerto Rico hotel. They sat here, everyone with their, some of them with their backs to us. We were required to come up here with no microphone, address the back of the committee members' heads here. We couldn't see their nameplates, and in many instances, we weren't allowed to comment on things at all. I think it was purposely scheduled during a busy, very busy summertime, when people are getting out of school and everything that's going on. And the meetings overlapped with several other city public meetings, even though there were requests made not to, you know, to make, make some considerations there. So, I, you know, it's going to the voters, and we'll see what it is. Frankly, I don't even, I don't even know if I can support half of this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Yes, Mayor, Dan Walpole, as you know, I served in this committee as well. And it's been brought up several times that Dave did come to the meeting and say he didn't think 708 should be changed. I personally had great disagreement with that, because I simply know, in my business experience, that the person that's responsible to make sure the checks cleared the bank has to have an equal amount of authority, and that was not existing under the library. So, I contacted Dave. Dave did not contact me. I discussed this with him, and I actually asked for his assistance in crafting the language. And I just wanted to mention that. And thank you, Dave, for helping me.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Adam Chairman, and members of council. Is it your preference to, to bring up some of the detailed comments on various items now, or would be a more appropriate for this evening?
Either way. But, well, we're going to be giving some direction to staff right now as to what to bring back. There's some things we, we will feel that we won't have to discuss in, in detail, although that, you will still be able to bring it up at, at public comment during the time, even if we say, we could say, "Okay, number 103, check, that's fine. We don't need to discuss it tonight." That would not preclude you from discussing it if you wished to.
Okay, so I could still bring it up, because it might be more appropriate to do it tonight, then.
All right. But, Dave, if you have some things to say as far as correction.
Well, I would suggest you tell us now.
Okay, all right.
We don't mind you repeating yourself.
They're small items, but I think they're, they're kind of important. On 402A, compensation, there's no mention of the requirement benefits in health insurance. Now, I don't know whether that's located somewhere else, but it seems to me that if the term compensation is correct in referring to that, it ought to be included in this paragraph. So, I raise that question. In 407, referring to regular meetings, that, that did not have any real critical changes, except that it did go to two meetings per month, except for August and December, where there'll be one meeting at each of those months. And it's, it's troubling when you try to modify an existing document and change the language. And one little thing here, I thought, was it, it does then say, and I was confused as I reread this on, on several occasions, is, "At all regular meetings," let's see, "all regular meetings shall be publicly," no, excuse me, "city council shall hold," and then they struck out the, the two meetings, "at, at such times as shall be fixed by ordinance or resolution." Well, when you're talking about "at such fixed times," that can mean more than just hours. I mean, that can mean, you know, days, months, whatever. And I just think it ought to be modified to say hours. It ought, so the city council has the ability to set the hour of the meeting by ordinance or resolution, as opposed to using the term "at such times," because I think it somewhat could, in someone's eyes, contradict the first statement, which says that the city council shall hold two meetings per month and so on. Okay, on compensation and bonds, section 503, it says, it was corrected from, "The city manager shall furnish a corporate surety bond." It was changed to, "The city manager shall have a corporate surety bond." So, there's nothing else about, you know, how he's going to get it. I think the intent is that the city would provide him with that bond.
I think that was covered in another section, wasn't it?
Maybe it is. I don't know. I just, it could be. I haven't read the whole thing in detail.
No, sorry. But I do remember that conversation. It was covered elsewhere.
All right, good. On section 704, where it references meetings, and it talks about boards and commissions shall be organized by elect, blah, blah, blah. It seems like committees ought to be included, along with boards and commissions. Okay, that, that was it.
Okay, thank you.
And that was a good, a good process, but I do think it was very much rushed, and there's, you know, 43 items is a tremendous number of items to cover in that length of time.
All right, thank you. Other public comment?
Mayor Gardner, council members, I am fond of the expression, "That people are entitled to their own opinions, but not their own facts." And I just wanted to speak as a member of the committee and also a member of the public to clear up a couple of things that were said earlier that are particularly bothersome. I'm sorry, name is David Bonson. It is, I assure you, not true, as my wife could attest, that we were done within 90 minutes at each meeting. I can assure you, it is not true that we did not have any discussion on items apart from council and city recommendations, other than grammatical ones. There was extensive discussion on a whole host of issues, and I think it's perfectly understandable that there would be some room for disagreement on the substance of a number of issues. But as the council members who were at the meeting can attest, it just isn't accurate that one of the prior comments a member of the public made. I don't, I don't care to speak to the different opinions that exist about the process for how the committee was formed. The city attorney has done an abundantly thorough job at communicating to us what the process required, what, what went into it. The particular issue, because I understand 708 is going to continue to come out tonight, that there was no discussion at the June 21st meeting is patently false. And I'm surprised that someone who attended every single meeting could possibly say such a thing. There was discussion at that meeting. We didn't end up voting that evening, and then we came back, and you've heard what took place at the, at the next meeting. But the reality is that, as far as the committee's role in this process was concerned, that there was a great deal of interaction on a number of issues, some of which have already been highlighted today, and including cases where I think frankly, the committee went against the direction that was being recommended to us. So, beyond grammatical changes. So, I, I just wanted that to be on the record, both as a member of the committee and as a member of the public. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there other public comment?
Hi, my name is Novelle Hendrickson, and unfortunately, I didn't get to the first meeting. Oh, wow, kind of short, right? Short, thank you. But I do watch council meetings, so I kind of tried to get up to speed of what was going on. First of all, I think it all started maybe in January, when the council had the, decided what kind of priorities they wanted. So, Dave got this thing out, and it was pretty useful. And I did find that, "Do you want to review the charter?" And I looked at that earlier, and I thought, "Hmm, why would they want to do that? They did it two, two years ago." But, so, so it was, that they did want to do it. So, I was kind of confused, because we were absent at the first meeting, I guess it was the 31st, because we were in Italy, which was very nice. So, it was nice to be all rested when we came back to see what was going on here. And anyway, I did, I did, on the 8th, listen to the streaming of your meeting of, about the charter being, going to be made. And actually, some of the council people were kind of concerned of what, what in the world is going on, because they didn't seem to know this was going to happen. So, then, when we came back, it seemed like everything was all together, that everybody found out what to do. This was a interesting exhibit that we got that updated that 8th. That was very, only a two-pager that was, I could see on the internet. But this is quite substantial, and it really tells you a lot. Now, what it did tell me is that most of these things had to do, or quite a few of them, had to do with present, present policy, or present, the way you do things.
Practice.
Or efficiency, a cleanup. That was kind of what it was all about, okay? So, anyway, looking at this whole situation, I found that 14 of the items were redos of the December 210, 2010. And it seemed to me, whoa, they did it in 2010, and they're going back to do 14 items of 2010. And I thought that was kind of ridiculous. But what it was, my first, our first meeting was on the 7th of June, and there were lots of high school kids there, and I thought, "Wow, they're going to see civics in action." Well, it wasn't. It was, first of all, we didn't have enough handouts for people to get. Luckily, they brought some in, but if you came in, you wouldn't know what was doing. And these poor kids were just like looking around. They didn't know what was happening. And what I'd love to have them hear once is the recording of Jim Mosher's little, what he said at the May 8th meeting, which was the best lesson in civics that anybody could have. And I, I really salute him for doing that. He does a lot of work, and I know some of you do not appreciate it, but the public appreciates people that will come down. And I really feel that in this, in this situation, it was very difficult for the people, the public, to say something, because I didn't realize that we have a new order here that, and when you have a committee, that the public has to make any comments in, at the first part of the meeting. So, you might want to have to count on four or five items that you might want to speak about. I don't understand that. This is a way of keeping the public from coming. And I would think that the council would want people to come and participate in government. But this kind of thing, I think, is lacking here. So, hopefully, this will go on the ballot, and we'll see how the public feels about it, because I think there will be some of these things which will not be popular. So, good luck to you in figuring out what you're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you. No, no, you're not. No. That doesn't matter. All right, is there any other public comment? Then I'll bring it back to council. I would just like to say, to lead off, I sat in most of the meetings, and kudos to the committee. I did think there was, there was good public comment, and I do think that the committee was independent and also did take cognizance of what was said, and many of their, of the public suggestions were incorporated. And many of the public suggestions were incorporated. I think that many times, there's a sense that we up here do not listen. And here, you're going to have a very good example of it, because on 708, I was one, I put my two cents in, and that I do feel, because it's a city charter type of government, a city manager type of government, that the city manager should have all that power. But I also feel, having listened to a number of comments, that this is a case where we cannot assuage the concerns of those who care about the Library. So I am also suggesting that we leave 708 as it is. If not, then that we definitely separate it out. So I just, that's a change of, that's a complete 360 on my part. Is that 360 or is it 180? 180. No, I went all the way around. 180. So, yes, comments do matter. You changed my mind. All right. Back to council now. Any general comments before we sort of go through these?
Well, I do want to get the sense of council that I thought we sort of mentioned to Paul that he would get a chance to make some wrap-up comments as chairman of the committee.
That's right. You're right.
So did you want to give him an opportunity?
Certainly. Go ahead, Paul. Thank you.
Mayor Gardner, members of council, we're beyond time, so I'll reserve my comments until a little bit later, if that's okay.
All right. Okay. So now, we're going to go through, and we're just going to do a straw vote of things that you feel that are sort of no-brainers, although nobody in the audience thinks any of those are. And those things that we would really like to discuss more fully tonight, and then take a vote on.
So we pull the exceptions off?
Yeah. If it might help you, I think staff has proposed exceptions, and then you can see if some things are not on your exception list.
All right.
And maybe Rob or Michael can chime in. I'll tell you what I have. I have 402, 402A. That would be one that I think should be talked about.
We would want to talk more about.
That's the compensation one. The other is 407. That's about, do you always meet twice a month, or once in August and once in December? Next, I jump to...
Excuse me. Do you have changes on these, or you just...
No, no. I'm just saying, things that you might want to talk about more tonight, because they seem more controversial. So I'm not proposing any changes at all to what the committee said.
All right. We can probably figure that out.
I think you can, but otherwise, you're going to go through each one and straw vote each one, and I was sparing you from that. But you can have it back. That'd be fine. Okay. The next one that jumped out in my mind is, of course, 708. And to me, those were the big ones. I don't know if, Rob, if you had others on your list, or Michael?
Just perhaps 709, which talks about the powers and duties of the parks, beaches, and rec commission, might also be for discussion if you so decide.
I did get an email from Mr. Luger suggesting that he would like the budget to continue to come to them, so that may be a fair one to talk about.
All right. Are there, looking through this list, and we've got some time, so don't feel rushed, but are there others? Councilman Zansky?
No. I'd say just do what you said, and kind of go through it, and let's eliminate what we can, so we get, you know, to the meat of it tonight.
Okay. So, section 103, to delete that. Any problems with that from anybody? Section 105, delete that. 106, changing the language. 200, the powers of the city. Let me go, no, I'm going too fast.
402A and B and 404 are all lumped together now.
Okay. All right. 404? Okay.
Didn't he say that was just lumped in together, too?
The only section there, the 404, has the mayor's additional stipend in it, which we, the committee and staff had proposed moving to section, a new section, 402.
I think that should be discussed.
402 should be discussed, yeah.
All right. And then...
So 402 is 567.
Right. Well, it's, no, there's still three separate provisions, but the changes were made with regard to compensation. And if you look at those sections here, 402B dealt with reimbursement for expenses, which is now covered in 402A. And 404, section 404, dealt with additional compensation for the mayor, which is also subsumed now under 402A. So there are changes to all three sections, but really, 402A is the heart of it.
Actually, technically, it's just 402.
Or 402, yeah.
408, special meetings. 409, place of meetings. 410, quorum.
You know, go back to 409.
Yeah?
I'll just make a comment on that. There was actually extensive discussion about section 409 at the committee meeting. And I finally jumped in myself to kind of hopefully clarify the issue a little bit. And this, there was a lot of deliberation about 409, the place of the meetings, where the meetings should be held, especially the regular meetings of city council.
So do you think this should be discussed?
I don't know that it needs to be discussed. I just wanted to bring that background to the, to our discussion here, that there was a lot of consideration of the changes that were made there.
All right. Further discussion on that? All right. 410, a quorum. 412, the adoption of ordinances and resolutions. 418, ordinances amendment. 421, contracts.
Again, there's another section that there was extensive public comment on, as to who should sign contracts, and who can bind the city, delegation of authority.
All right. 425, city hall. 503, we've discussed, the compensation bond. 504 was the powers and duties, adding the word maintain. 505, meetings, who can sit where. 507, the manager, Protam. 602, the city attorney. 603, the city clerk, and this was also discussed. Second, 605, director of finance, which remains unchanged. 608, illegal contracts. Is this something that anybody needs more discussion on? This did get some discussion, again, at the committee level. 609, acceptance of other office. 700...
611.
I'm sorry, 611, official bonds. This is, Ron, was that the, that was, that would be the section that we were talking about. Section 700. 702, appointment terms. 703, existing boards, delete. Meeting chairperson, section 704. 705, compensation vacancies. Compensation and vacancy, sorry. 707, the planning commission. This removes the public works aspect.
Except, go ahead, Erin.
Well, there's still provision on the government code that requires them to look at the CIP budget every year.
All right. We've agreed that we'll discuss 708 and 709. Section 710, it remains as it is, except for some gender corrections. Section 801 will remain, is recommended to remain unchanged. 1106, centralized purchasing. Again, this is recommended to remain unchanged. Section 1114, claims and demands. This got quite a bit of discussion, this, based on the, it was actually the city attorney's recommendation, based on a recent case.
That's right. A recent case out of Los Angeles, limiting class action claims for taxes and fees.
Yeah. Actually, I'll flag that one as one that we should talk about, because there was some spirited discussion amongst the committee members, and I don't know that they all, in the end, agreed that that should be changed. So we should probably discuss that.
Okay. Section 1115...
Or at least change in the manner that it was.
Right.
Including the class action.
Recommended delete, this one. Section 116, the independent audit. There was a lot of discussion about the timing of that.
Yeah. There was extensive, I think it even trailed over a couple of meetings. We had a staff report from Dan Metusewitz about that. The issue came down to, I think, more so how quickly we should provide the information. We wound up with within 270 days. I think there were some government code sections that covered some disclosures. There was some issues about how quickly it could be done. And there was extensive discussion and crafting of this, changes to this section.
Okay. Section 1201, no, I'm sorry, section 1200. 1201, again, a deletion. And section 1400. All right. So that gives you what we will focus on. Now, let me remind the public that that does not mean that if there is an issue that we haven't selected to discuss, that you certainly will be able to bring it up tonight and have us discuss it in more detail.
And Mayor Gardner, if we could ask the council if there are any other charter sections any individual city council member would like us to consider or bring back outside of the 43 that are here as well at the regular meeting? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you once again to the committee.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protam.
One of the things that was not part of the committee's charge, but one of the things that I've sort of thought about, as we have this opportunity to update the charter, is whether or not there are things, as we look at what other cities have done, and other issues that we may want to avoid, is the issue of red light cameras, and whether or not they should be prohibited in Newport Beach. And it's a little bit different than what we've looked at here before, but I, the city attorney and I had an opportunity to talk about this. I've talked briefly about it with the chief of police, and he doesn't have any objections to this. I frankly think red light cameras are something that we should avoid in our, in our city as a means of ticketing, not as means of traffic regulation, keeping traffic flowing. They're not red light cameras, but as speed traps. So if we could have a discussion of that when we come back this afternoon.
All right. Anything else?
And we, I worked on a similar charter amendment when I was at the state of Anaheim, so we can actually provide sample language for you this evening for your consideration.
All right. All right. Public comments on non-agenda items, or items on closed session?
Mayor Gardner, my name is Jim Mosher. Again, I don't mean to be personally insulting, because I do sincerely, sincerely respect all of you. But those of you who read the report from the Charter Update Committee, at least not this truncated version, but the full one, may have noticed that section 409 of the current city charter allows you to adjourn, as you're about to do, to meetings and places other than the council chamber, which I assume includes that back conference room where you're going to go. However, it says that those meetings and all of your meetings shall be open to the public. The revised charter that you are hoping voters will approve on November 6 would allow you to hold meetings under the less strict provisions of the Brown Act, which I might point out permits you, under very limited circumstances, to exclude the public from your meetings, but never under any circumstance compels you to do so, and indeed encourages you to adopt more expansive policies. One aspect of the Brown Act that we seem to have forgotten in recent months is that before you close the door on your closed session, you are required by the Brown Act to provide the public not only with a written, but also with an oral announcement of those topics that you find so explosive that you think they need to be discussed in secret. In view of that, and mindful that, like most everything else in Newport Beach, knowingly violating the city charter is a misdemeanor punishable by a $1,000 fine and six months in jail, before adjourning to the back room, I think the public is due the courtesy either of an invitation to join you, as is required by our city charter, or at a minimum, the oral announcement of what you plan to talk about that is required by the Brown Act. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be meeting regarding the items listed on the closed session agenda in closed session.
Thank you. Is there other public comment adjourning to closed session?